This is the Twins Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 7th. And I welcome everybody that's here tonight and calling the meeting order, Mr. Ray Hope, you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mrs. Kane Criswell.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Turrell Waldron.
Here.
And Mr. Stuber has asked them.
Mr. Stuber will not be here this evening. And I also welcome you now to all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Well, thank you very much, and it's good to see all your smiling faces even though winter is bearing down at us. Any moment is coming. The leaves are starting to change. I know, shh, I won't say the S-word. But welcome, everybody. It's good to see a packed house. And I do not have a president's report this evening, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Powers and also at the same time welcome the students that we have here from Samuel Bissell Elementary and RB Chamberlain Middle School. Mrs. Powers?
Good evening, Mr. Stuber. Good evening, Board of Education. Mr. Stuber, oh goodness.
That's right, it works.
Good evening, Mr. Felber. Mr. Stuber is not with us this evening. Good evening, parents and students. It's so great to see everybody here this evening. Pleased to apologize, our sound is a little off tonight. Mr. Gatauski usually takes care of the sound for us on behalf of the city of Twinsburg is homesick. And so we're going to struggle this using their new system on our own. So I'm apologizing to you in advance if you cannot hear us very well this evening or if there's some static. We're just not used to the system and tinkering with it is not something I really want to do. So we're going to do the best that we can and hopefully not break the new system here at City Hall. That would be a bad opportunity for us. We have so many things to be excited about, and I'm always so delighted to see our students and their parents. And we want to celebrate you and all the great things that are happening in our schools. But before we get to that, there are a couple of things that I want to inform our families about. This coming Friday, and I think Mr. Reese is going to really give a lot more information than I am, so I don't want to steal his thunder too much. But it's going to be a pretty exciting day at Twinsburg High School because Nick Vucisic, who's going to be here to talk to our students about a message of anti-bullying and making positive choices. And the exciting thing is that our students at RBC will be traveling to the high school to participate in a simulcast from Twinsburg High School. So hundreds of students across the state of Ohio will be able to hear and see our students in participation of this very important message. And this is part of our PBIS initiative, our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Initiative. And we're just very honored to be able to be the host school selected out of many, many high schools and middle schools across the state. They picked Twinsburg High School and RB Chamberlain Middle School. And I do want to publicly thank Mr. Reese because he's been the driving force behind bringing this important Stand Strong, Stand Tall opportunity to our students. So we'll be hearing a lot about it as we move forward here in the program. I don't want to steal any more of his thunder, but it's an opportunity that I'm very proud of. Also, Board of Education, as you know, we continue to improve and enhance the manner in which we communicate with our parents. And one of the things that we're very proud of obviously is our quality profile, and I hope you've had a chance to take a look at that. But we continue to try to improve how we communicate with our families. And at the beginning of the year, moms and dads, think back to the first week of school and your child's book bag and opening the book bag, and there were all those forms to fill out. And it's duplicate and triplete if you had more than one child in our school district. So finally, we're going to be moving ahead with an initiative with a company called InfoSnap. And InfoSnap will be our online forms for our parents to be able to fill online so you don't get writer's cramp anymore. And you'll be able to adjust information if you had a change in a phone number, you changed your location of employment, you'll be able to go online and make those adjustments. We're going to launch it with our incoming kindergarten class, which seems like a long time away, but it's going to take us some time to put in the infrastructure to make sure that we have everything just right. And we'll hopefully be able to preregister our next kindergarten class right after the winter break and as we roll into the spring with the intention that the next new school year, the 16, 17 school year, will be the beginning of online forms for our parents. So I hope you're as excited as we are to be able to roll that out. It's been a long time coming, a lot of work behind the scenes, but we're very, very proud of that initiative. Board of Education, one of the things that is questioned quite a bit, at least to me, is our conversations around enrollment. If you look around our town, you look around Twinsburg Township, you look around Remindedville, you see a lot of new houses being constructed. And so the question is, boy, if we have all those new houses going in, what's going on with our student enrollment? I had hoped to be able to share with you this evening some information on the screen, but because our technology is going to be limping here a little bit, I can't do that, but I will do that at our next board meeting. But I just want to share with you some interesting statistics. Every month, the first Friday of each month, all of our buildings, the secretaries forward to me a copy of the actual enrollment in the schools. So kids in seats, in desks, and that's the number that I really count on, the ones, the kids that are here. And so we are studying that. And so I pulled the numbers from last week, which was October 2nd, 2015, a year ago, October 3rd, 2014, and a year before that, October 4th, 2013. And our enrollment on October 4th, 2013 was 4,254 students. Last year, in '14, it was 4,177 students, which meant that our enrollment decreased by 77 students. And then October 2nd, 2015, just last week, our enrollment here in the district of actual kids in school was 4,120 students, which was about 57 less students than a year ago. So that was kind of curious. If you've been paying attention to what we've been talking about here at board meetings and in our family forums and things, we've been studying the enrollment. A couple of years back, I worked with the city of Twinsburg on their Comprehensive Strategic Planning Committee. And during that work, Mr. Finch, Larry Finch is the person that's behind the development in the city here, provided to me a study that said that we were not expecting to have an increase in enrollment. And I was curious about that. I live in town, I see all the new construction going up, so I said, Larry, I don't understand why that's the case per your study. And what he said is finding is even though we have the new construction, and you would think that our enrollment would be growing with all these new families moving into town, what's happening on the other side of things is that our families who have been here for many, many, many years, whose kids have passed through the district, have graduated, gone on to college and career maybe elsewhere, they're not leaving. And that's thanks in great part to the great city services that we have here in the city of Twinsburg. So empty nesters are staying and put, their kids are leaving, and we have the new families moving into town now. So I didn't quite trust Larry, I suppose. I'm always a doubting Thomas. So we did our own study with a firm out of Columbus called DeYoung Richter, and they came and they studied the number of live births and the projection over time. And guess what? They're finding the same information in their study. So we rely on the data that we have here. We take a look at what's happening in our towns. And at this point in time, it's not dramatically increasing. It looks like it's pretty stable if you consider that we have more than 4,000 students. So I thought that was interesting information. I just wanted to clear that up and explain what we do here with attendance and enrollment. And it's really something that we pay close attention to because it means big things to what happens in our classrooms. So next board meeting, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'll display the numbers specifically, but that's the information that I have tonight. Let's see. Friday, October 16th is NEOA Day. And so that is a day historically to provide opportunities for staff members to have professional development here in our district and away. So Friday, October 16th is a day where our kids will have a nice long weekend. So we hope you have a great weekend. By that point, these trees are really going to be changing. I don't think we're going to have snow anytime soon.
You said it, I didn't say.
But pretty trees, I think, would be the thing. And then the last thing, on a more serious note, if you have been wondering what happened to Market Day, you know, our PTAs for many, many years sponsored their fundraising effort through Market Day. And parents and grandparents and residents would fill out a Market Day form, and then once a month, they would pick up their food. I think it was at Wilcox most recently. And it was a great source of fundraising for our PTAs. And those dollars were used then to support scholarships for our graduating seniors and also to support classroom opportunities throughout the school district. Well, last summer, our PTA heard the bad news that the company that owned Market Day was sold. And so that's not going to be an opportunity that they can enjoy this school year. So we've been looking for an opportunity that might be able to raise the same level of fundraising as Market Day did. And so our PTA is going to launch a citrus sale from Florida Indian River Groves. And you'll be getting information about that here in October with the sale actually kicking off in November with delivery right before the holiday in December. And we're pretty excited about this because, you know, we have a wellness initiative here in our school district. And I know Mr. Bendis is going to talk to you about all the great wellness initiatives that we have here this evening, but I'm pleased that the PTA is moving in this direction. So look for more information. We do appreciate any support you can offer us for the Florida Indian River Grove citrus sale that you'll be getting some information here shortly. Again, those dollars that are raised go to high school scholarships as well as classroom projects for our teachers and kids right here in our school district. So thank you. So that's all I have to report on this evening. Board of Education, we're going to do our Students of the Month a little bit differently because the handheld microphone is not working. So I'll be announcing kiddos' names from the podium. And Mrs. Johnson is await this evening, but she has asked our school counselor, Mr. Matt Hoffman, to help us. So I'd like to invite Mr. Hoffman up. And Mrs. Turrell Waldron is going to provide nice pins to our boys and girls this evening. Boys and girls, when your name is called this evening, we're going to ask you to come on up and shake Mr. Hoffman's hands, and he has a certificate for you. Mrs. Turrell Waldron's hand, and she has a great pin for you. And then we'd like you to stand right in front of the table until all the boys and girls' names are called so that your moms and dads and grandparents can take a nice photo of you and that everybody in our community can see your great faces when you're showing on our table channels.
Welcome, Mr. Hoffman. Glad to see you. The Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set these students apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the accomplishments of the following outstanding tigers from Samuel Bissell Elementary School. So we'll start with our seventh grade, our second grade students, whoops, from Mr. Robles' class, we have Ava Vanich. And from Mrs. Holliday's class, we have Ruben Krieger. Now moving on to our big tigers at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, our third graders. From Mrs. Alinsky's class, we have Grayson Ballin. From Mrs. Rowetter's class, we have Grace Jacobus. From Mrs. Rinallo's class, we have Justin Sanford. From Mrs. Kinsella's class, we have Olivia Shayeb. And from Mrs. Dorland's class, we have Kaia Shaw. Let's give these outstanding tigers a round of applause. Now, boys and girls, I know your parents and your family members are so proud of you. Can you stand nice and tall and put your wonderful certificates right in front of yourself so that they can take a great picture? And everybody say tigers. Ready? All right, thank you, boys and girls. You may be seated. And one more round of applause.
Samuel Bissell Elementary School also has a Staff Member of the Month this month. And our staff member is our new art teacher, Dana Castregano. Do you want to come on up? And Ms. Castregano was nominated by the second grade staff that works with her in the art room. And I think I'd like to just kind of read what they wrote about her when they nominated her. They said, "We would like to nominate Dana Castregano for Staff of the Month. As a new teacher in our building, she has already made a huge impact on the students and staff. Mrs. Castregano's creativity is contagious. The hallways at Bissell are filled with wonderful student artwork. She makes the students love art. She dresses up to help the students connect with the lessons she is teaching. Mrs. Castregano became famous when she transformed herself and room while teaching cave paintings. Students look forward to going to art and wonder what will come next. Mrs. Castregano has donated her time and talent to create banners and posters for the students to carry in parades. With the help of the staff, she painted a wall canvas for Mrs. Johnson's office. For these and many other reasons, we believe she deserves to be Staff of the Month at Samuel Bissell Elementary School." So thank you very much. And Mrs. Johnson also wanted me to share just a few highlights that we have at Bissell this month. And I think it would start with the Read-a-thon that is currently ongoing. And I can proudly say as of Friday, October 2nd, that the students at Samuel Bissell have read more than 85,000 minutes. So it's something very exciting at school, and the students are reading a lot. We have bulletin boards throughout the school. There are prizes for reading. And as of Friday, the second grade class that has read the most minutes is Mrs. Doyle's class with 6,862 minutes. And in third grade, it's Mr. Latys's class with 6,811 minutes. The final numbers will be available next week. So certainly, we'd like to thank the PTA for all of their hard work. They have put up those bulletin boards, they're giving out prizes to the students, certainly making it a fun event. So it's been a great, great event for all of us. And then just finally, we have something coming up on October 16th, which is the Bissell Blood Drive, which will go on between 1:00 and 7:00 PM on October 16th. If you would like to preregister an appointment for that, you can go to redcrossblood.org and enter the sponsor code BISSEL. After going to the PTA meeting last week, they say that this is one of our biggest events for fundraising. So hopefully we'll have another great turnout. It's been a great start to the year at Bissell, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Always a great place to just visit is Bissell Elementary School. It's such a great opportunity. When I get to stop there, I was telling somebody earlier this evening that most of my teaching career was at the second grade level. So when I go to Bissell, I feel like I'm at home. And it's just a great feeling for anybody to walk in the door. You just feel really good about our Bissell building and all the great things that our staff, students, PTA, and parents are doing. So thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for pinch hitting tonight. You did a great job. I'd now like to ask Mr. Reese to come forward. Mr. Reese is our principal at RB Chamberlain Middle School. And at RB Chamberlain Middle School, we have Students of the Month we'd like to present as well. It says, "The following students have been selected this month by their respective teaching teams as RBC Middle School Students of the Month for September." So to begin, we have seventh grader Amy Dacabura. Moving on to our eighth graders, we have Jewel Duncan. We're so very proud of our students from RBC. Congratulations. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Just like our Bissell students, if you would just please hold your certificates in front of you for a moment and let our parents and grandparents and family members get a great photo of you and your classmates. I know that means a lot to them. Thank you. One more round of applause for these outstanding students from RB Chamberlain. Thank you. You may be seated. And now, Mr. Reese has some big news he wants to share about all the great things going on at our middle school. Welcome, Mr. Reese.
Thank you. And I always try to highlight some things from the different areas at RBC. And an easy one to pick this month academically is, I don't know if the Bissell kids knew it, but Mrs. Castregano teaches at RBC, too. She starts the day at RBC teaching Art I, a high school level class at the middle school. And that's where the top arts students in our school. And that allows those kids to then get to the AP courses at the high school a lot quicker. And she is doing a, just a good a job at RBC as she's doing at Bissell, and all the kids really love her. And she really stretches them, which means she really makes them work hard, become better artists. So we're very proud. That's one of our academic highlights this year, a middle school that offers Art I for high school credit. Socially and emotionally, as Mrs. Powers talked about, we're very excited about having Nick speak to us on Friday. I've been showing his videos to kids for years to inspire them to better themselves. And last spring, we got an email saying that Nick wanted to talk to every kid in the state of Ohio through a simulcast, which means we'd turn the TV on and all the kids would get to watch him speak. And I immediately said, yes. You know, I signed up for it right away. We want to have Nick speak to, hear him talk to the kids on the TV. And then I got a call about a week later saying, you know, Nick's looking for special communities to speak at and have it simulcast from. And I said, well, who do I call? And they gave me the number. And that was, it was easy from there because to tell, you know, what a great community Twinsburg is and why Nick should speak live from Twinsburg, that was the easy sell. So that was a 10-minute phone call, and they said, Jim, we want to come to Twinsburg. And so on Friday, RBC and Twinsburg High School students are going to hear Nick speak live. He's going to be simulcast to schools all around the state. And he brings a very positive message and one that I think will have a great effect on our students. And if you look up Nick, his last name's kind of hard to spell and hard to say. Vucic, I think, I believe is the correct pronunciation. But Nick was born without any arms or any legs and accomplished amazing things. And it's very inspirational, very inspirational to hear him speak. So I encourage all of you to look it up. He does have videos on YouTube that you can watch. But that's not my top highlight today. That'll be my top highlight Friday. Because tonight, right now, going to be running out of the board meeting, undefeated Twinsburg, RB Chamberlain, is playing undefeated Aurora over at Tiger Stadium right now. And that's for the division championship, and Tiger pride is on the loose right now because very seldom do you have kids making signs for middle school games. But they made one for this game. And so we're very excited about that staff had a tailgate party, and the kids are all out there two hours before the game making signs and dressed up. And it's like a mini Friday night out there. So we're very excited. So check my tweets later and see if we remain undefeated and win the division championship over Aurora. So those are some of our highlights.
What Mr. Reese was talking about, it's probably almost impossible to look up by name, but if you look up Nick, paraplegic motivational speaker, you'll find it right away on Google. And fascinating stories behind him.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You need to make sure you bring us home a winner. I have a lot riding on this game.
I just want to know what flag is flying over your house right now.
Yeah, well, I need one of those signs in my yard, right?
Yeah, please, go put that in my yard, right?
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Mr. Felber, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. And I'm sure, you know, many of you are fascinated by what goes on for the rest of the meeting, but many of you may want to go home, have a snack, do some homework. Now is a good time to do that. You're more than welcome to stay. That's your clue if you want to leave. We're more than welcome to stay. So I'll give you a moment to, give them a moment to exit. I also saw that hug, how he gave his sister or sister. That was very special. Absolutely.
Hi, thanks for being here.
I think I'm going to toss it back to you, Mrs. Powers. I believe we have an administrative report.
We do.
And I'm not sure where that administrator went. He's probably, oh, there he is.
Right, he's up front here. So every year, Board of Education, we invite Mr. Bendis to come to a board member to share with our community all of the great things that are going on in our food service department under his leadership. Mr. Bendis is a licensed and certified dietitian, and because of his background and his interest in doing great things for our kids, our kids have some really great things going on. And so welcome you, Mark. You always have a lot to share, so I'm going to stop talking and let you begin.
Thank you. I did have some videos that I was going to show today, but because of our technical difficulties, I'll have to have you look them up on our webpage. Anyway, the main purpose for me to be here right now is something called Certification of Standards Governing Types of Foods and Beverages Sold on School Premises. So what that means is it's my job as a registered dietitian for Twinsburg City Schools to ensure that all the foods that we sell to our students and we offer to our students as part of the reimbursable lunch and as part of alacard snacks meet the federal requirements, which are smart snacks in schools. So every year, we do that. But every year, we also look at what we offer and see that if there's ways that we can improve. So each year, we try to make steps each to improve what we offer. And it is a process. One of the things I think we do well in Twinsburg schools is in a day and age where most schools are heat and serve, where they're taking frozen food and just heating it up in an oven or in a steamer, we do more from scratch now in Twinsburg schools than we did 20 years ago. We, one of the things that we do, that we started last year, we did a farm-to-school grant, and we started an herb garden in Twinsburg schools. It's now on display every day inside the high school cafeteria serving area. So we have been growing fresh basil and fresh oregano for over a year now, which we use in our homemade pizza sauce, which we use in all of our schools. It's made fresh each week at the high school, and it's shipped out to the schools, and it's used on our pizzas. So that's one of the things that we do. We've actually looked to expand that this year. So one of the things that we've added this year is we're starting to grow cilantro so we can control. You always hear, you know, the latest thing is, I think it's English cucumbers, there's a salmonella outbreak. Or there's, cilantro's another one, and there's a lot of things like that where a lot of these... Thank you. I did have some videos that I was going to show today, but because of our technical difficulties, I'll have to have you look them up on our webpage. Anyway, the, the main purpose for me to be here right now is, is something called certification of standards governing types of foods and beverages sold on school premises. So what that means is, it's my job as a registered dietitian for Twinsburg City Schools to ensure that all the foods that we sell to our students and we offer to our students as part of the reimbursable lunch and as part of a la carte snacks meet the federal requirements, which are smart snacks in schools. So every year we do that. But every year we also look at what we offer and see that if there's ways that we can improve. So each year we try to make steps each to improve what we offer. And, and it is a process. One of the things I think we do well in Twinsburg schools is, in a day and age where most schools are heat and serve, where they're taking frozen food and just heating it up in an oven or, or in a steamer, we do more from scratch now in Twinsburg schools than we did 20 years ago. We, one of the things that we do, that we started last year, we did a farm-to-school grant, and we started an herb garden in Twinsburg schools. It's now on display every day inside the high school cafeteria serving area. So we have been growing fresh basil and fresh oregano for over a year now, which we use in our homemade pizza sauce, which we use in all of our schools. It's made fresh each week at the high school, and it's shipped out to the schools, and it's used on our pizzas. So that's one of the things that we do. We've actually looked to expand that this year. So one of the things that we've added this year is we're, we're starting to grow cilantro so we can control, you always hear, you know, the latest thing is, I think it's English cucumbers, there's a salmonella outbreak, or there's, cilantro's another one, and there's a lot of things like that where a lot of these products are coming from Mexico, and sometimes the quality control is not very good. So what we've discovered is, if we make it ourselves, we can control, we can control the quality. So nutritionally and quality-wise, taste-wise for the students. So we find that we can keep a product safer and better tasting product. So that's one thing that we're looking to do. So we, we did add, we're trying to grow cilantro this year and cherry tomatoes, which we use in all of our salads. So that's something we're experimenting with this year. The, one of the new things we did last year, and we're going to look at that again this year, is we, we applied for and received a grant from the Fuel Up to Play 60 Fund through the American Dairy Association. We received, Twinsburg Schools received $16,000. And a lot of that went to, we actually started a few new programs with that. We started something called Tiger Breakfast Rewards, and what it was, was a reward system for if our kids were eating breakfast in schools, and we're trying to encourage, because we know that eating breakfast is a great way to start your morning, and it's a great way to improve learning. So we want to emphasize the importance of breakfast, whether you eat at home or in school. But for those of our students that partake in it in school, the more times they eat breakfast at school, the more opportunities they have to win great prizes. So we used some of the funds from the grant to purchase those prizes. And we also went to the community and received gift certificates for Chipotle and Sheetz gas cards for the high school. We got gift cards from Fun and Stuff for the middle school and Dodge Intermediate. Dairy Queen donated gift certificates. We also went out and got prizes, purchased prizes for Bissell and Wilcox students. So it's just something little that a couple students each month get a little award if they've been buying breakfast or getting breakfast. So it's just a little kind of reward system that we're trying to put in place. We also were able to purchase processing, food processors, which enable us to shred our cheese and keep our cheese for our pizzas very fresh. So that was something we bought at all of our schools. And we also, the funds also will generate $800 for PE equipment for each of our schools. So it's something that we can apply for each year. We're going to be in the process of investigating that again this year, and we'll apply for the new grant, I think, by November 4th. So it's just a partnership. That's a way to generate revenue for our food service to buy new equipment, to do promotions for the students, to get them healthy. Our goal in food service as well as in wellness is to get our kids active and to keep them healthy through the food that we feed them. So that was, that was the main thing I want to, my, oh, yeah, before I get into that. So one of the things I was going to show you on, on video today is, I was experimenting with Vine videos this year. So the topic came up in conversation with my staff at the end of last year that all the great things that we do in Twinsburg, most of our parents don't see them. You know, they see the menu, but for the most part, when people think of school lunch, they, what they think school lunch is, is what they see on the media. So, and to be honest with you, most of what is portrayed in the media for school food service is not very flattering. So, you know, what we're trying to do is trying to kind of put the word out there, what we're doing in Twinsburg schools. You know, it's not very, very often that we can get parents in the schools during lunchtime to, to show them what we're doing. So, you know, I've, although my son's very embarrassed by the fact that I'm using Vine videos, he's 16 and I'm now 47, he's upset. I'm, you're way too old to be using Vine. And I said, well, I'm using it for advertising. So it's, what Vine is, is it's a 20-second video. It's, it's not much, but it's enough to get a short picture of what we're doing. So one of the things that we debuted this month at Twinsburg High School, and actually at Chamberlain and Dodge as well, is we started doing a solid muscle homemade chicken sandwich. So we did a chicken Parmesan sandwich at the high school, and then we did a breaded chicken sandwich at Dodge and Chamberlain. So if you look on my webpage, you'll see new, new and exciting in Tiger Food Service Vine, and it'll show you our Vine videos that we've created so far. So there's a chicken Parmesan video there that kind of briefly shows you the finished product and a little bit of the processing part of it as well. The other video on there is about our homemade pizza sauce. So it's, it's a video showing our pizza garden, our herb gardens, as well as the process of making the sauce and then the finished pizza product. So that was, that was two of the videos. The other video, and the reason for this shirt, it's Fear Factor Veggie Edition, and it says, Do You Have What It Takes? We actually started an initiative at, at Chamberlain and Dodge this year. For the last six years, we have done something called Fruit and Veggie Patrol at Bissell and Wilcox. So what Fruit and Veggie Patrol is, is it is in a, oop, it doesn't fall over. It's an initiative that we started, like I said, six years ago, that rewards our students, whether they buy lunch or pack lunch, if they have a fruit or vegetable, and they eat it in their lunch. So I'll go out and with our wellness fund, I will purchase things from Oriental Trading Company and those little giveaways. And it could be stickers. It could be, I think we gave a little sticky hands away in, in August and September. But what we want to do is, we want to acknowledge the importance of our students eating fresh fruits and vegetables, whether they're buying or packing. And I can tell you, in the six years that I've been doing this, and I've been doing school food service now for, this is my 23rd year, and I can tell you, for all those years prior to six years ago, I was in and out of my school cafeterias and kitchens all the time and really didn't have a good connection with our students. So in the last six years since doing Fruit and Veggie Patrol, and we do it at Bissell and Wilcox, I can walk in any of my buildings up to Dodge now, and kids recognize me and go, you're the Fruit and Veggie guy. And I thought, as a registered dietitian, that's a great thing to be known as. So, so that was a good thing. And so I felt like we were doing the right thing there. And I can honestly tell you, in the six years that I've been doing it, there's been a marked improvement in the amount of fruits and vegetables that I see in lunches, packed and purchased. So that's a good thing. So this year, the, the idea was, how do we take it to the next step? How can we do something like that at Dodge and Chamberlain? So that's where, I don't know if you guys can see this that well, but it's Fear Factor Veggie Edition, and it says, Do You Have What It Takes? So the idea is that about every other month, we are going to do a, a taste sampling to the students. So I have shirts for myself and for my staff to wear on those days. So when the kids come in, they're going to know something's different. So in, in September, we debuted a new blended vegetable juice that we were going to offer to our students at Dodge and Chamberlain. We actually offer it at the high school as well, and, and we offer it once a month at Bissell and Wilcox. But it is a, a vegetable blend juice that counts as a serving of vegetable. And I can, I was a little apprehensive about it to start, but when we started giving out the free samples, I saw, we started at Chamberlain, and I saw groups of kids gathering and challenging each other to try it. And pretty soon, we were flooded. So I was kind of flooded. And when I went to Dodge, it was totally insane. You know, we had 1,000 students, and I must have given out 1,000 samples. It was crazy. So, but it was, it was great. It was, it was great for me to connect with the students. It was great for the students to see that we want their input. So what we've got from that was, the kids loved the juice. They couldn't wait till we debuted it. The first Tuesday that we debuted it, it's twice, twice a week we offer it. We offer fruit juices on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then we do the vegetable juices on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the response to them has been overwhelming. In fact, it was ironically, we have a, at Dodge Intermediate, the kids are allowed a small a la carte allowance. And my manager called me and said, are the kids allowed to buy juice off of their account? They want to buy the vegetable juice. And I said, sure, it's a la carte, so they could buy it, and they can get it as part of their lunch. So kids were getting it as part of their lunch and also buying it. So that was kind of a, a good thing. So, so not everything will be as easy as juice this month. We're going to be, I'll be going to Dodge and Chamberlain again and doing Tex-Mex baked beans. So we're going to try something a little bit different. But it's just a way to challenge the kids to try, to stretch themselves. You know, our goal, and my goal as a registered dietitian, is to try to get them to eat and expand their horizons as far as what they'll eat. So fruits and vegetables, beans, of course. So it's just a way, a kind of a, kind of a neat way to kind of challenge them to step out of their shell and try something new. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell what's going on in Twinsburg food service this year. But are there any questions?
Mark, can you update the board on Paws on Child Hunger as well?
Oh, yes, thank you. We are actually, Paws on Child Hunger is our backpack program that we started now two years?
Three, third year.
Third year, beginning of the third year. Hard to believe. First year was Wilcox. We added Bissell the second year. And we are going to be meeting this month to discuss the opportunity to add Dodge as well. So that's, that's our goal for this year, is to expand the program to Dodge. It gets a little trickier at Dodge because at Bissell and Wilcox, it's, it's very discreet because the teachers have access to the kids' backpacks and can kind of sneak those. And what the backpack program is, if you're not aware of Paws on Child Hunger, and this is something kind of unique to Twinsburg, we want to do something healthy for the kids that was kid-friendly, something that was easy for them to eat, that was healthy, and that they didn't have to use any cooking utensils or cooking equipment or anything like that. So what a normal backpack contains is a protein source, which we use peanut-free sunflower seeds, two apples, well, they, two packs of sunflower seeds, two apples, two packs of baby carrots, and then two whole grain cereals, usually a sweetened one and an unsweetened one, and then two snacks. So, and with the snacks, they're not things like honey wheat pretzels or sun chips or Chex mixes. We're looking for, in, in whole, we're looking for nutrient density. So this is for our kids that are in need in Twinsburg City Schools. So we're looking for easy food that they can grab and eat themselves and feed themselves, but something that is nutrient-dense, meaning it's for the, the amount of food that it is, it's high in calories and high in nutrients. So it's, it's not really meal replacements, but it's a supplement. Each backpack that goes home is approximately 1,100 calories. So it's something that helps our students considerably. And it's something that's done really well in the first two years, and we think it's going to do great at Dodge as well.
Was that given at the beginning of the week, or was it like Friday afternoon when they go home?
Friday afternoon. So the bags are usually packed on Wednesday by staff or volunteers, and then they, and everything is shelf-stable pretty much, you know. And then it just goes, gets slipped in the backpack on, before they go home on Friday. So Dodge, it creates a little bit of an issue because we've got to be a little more creative because we don't have access to lockers or backpacks at Dodge. So, so the idea with the program is, as anything that we do in, in food service, you know, if we're dealing with students that are financially needy, we want to be discreet. We don't want to overtly identify anyone. So we wanted it to be a discreet program that benefits the kids and the families.
Mark's been a driving force behind Paws on Child Hunger now in its third year. Places the order. Cernus has been so generous to us in providing the fruits and vegetables.
I believe they don't, I think last year with Bissell and Wilcox, they donated almost $5,000 worth of produce to us.
And I think the last time you reported, you had reduced the amount that you had to purchase by your vendor contributions.
Right.
To Paws on Hunger, which is great.
And, and we were looking at other options as well to try to reduce the cost of the program because right now, all the products are purchased through our food service operation. And kind of the reason for that, some of the models out there were using all donated foods. And the problem you have with that is when you go out and ask for donations, you get all kinds of varieties of things. So, you know, I think the first donation food drive that we did, we got coffee, and we got a giant can of beans, you know. So those are things that you can pack easily in somebody's bag. And also, you know, we're all always concerned about food allergies as well. So the fact that we do it in-house, we're able to control all those things. And, and one of the things that we thought was really important for these kids is that it was consistent, that we have like two different bags that go home. It's different each week. So there's something a little bit different in each one. But if they did get opened up on the bus, and they do sometimes, we wanted, we didn't want one young man and another person having something totally different. We wanted it to be consistent across the board, and we found that that's been very helpful. And I know at Bissell and Wilcox, we see a lot of those snacks come back through the week when kindergartners need to bring snacks in too. So we, we have seen the benefits of it.
Thank you for keeping our students as healthy as you can. And sure, 4,100 picky eaters, but.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. It's, it's always interesting. It's never boring.
Other comments from, from the board?
I was just going to say, I don't have any questions, but, you know, I never knew food services could be so interesting until a few years ago. But you always have something really exciting going on, and I think the veggie juice is just brilliant, so.
Well, if you get a chance, go up on my webpage and check out the Vine videos. There's four up there. And that's, we're going to hopefully expand that. And as we move throughout the year, we try new things. We're going to pop a video up of what we're doing so parents get to see what's happening in our schools.
All right, thank you. And, and I did see a hand, and we don't take questions at this part of the meeting, but you're more than welcome to join us in a moment with something called remonstrance, if you'd like to make a comment to, to the board and from the young gentleman in the back. So don't leave anywhere. This may be for you. Anything else administrating for the reports?
No, I'm just always proud of what Mark does for our, our school district and our kids. And, and it's always something new and fresh, and he's always thinking about the next new initiative out of food service. And a great leader too, talk about Paws on Child Hunger, his food service staff has donated more than, is it $900?
Almost $1,000.
For the program this year that just happened. So he's, he really is all in when it comes to doing great things here. So Mark, thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendis. All right. Nothing further administrating?
No.
All right, we are at the point of meeting, what's called remonstrance, with the opportunity for the public to address the board. I don't have any blue cards, Mr. Ayo, do you?
Mr. Felber, our, our young visitor there is, I'm working on a Cub Scout badge, and he came to see me this evening and said that he's here at the, at the board meeting tonight. He needs to cover this and bring an issue back to his, his pack. And so if you want to come up and ask your question, this is a great time. I'm a little out of, but I think it's important that we grow our, our young Tigers into being responsible citizens, so it's a great opportunity. So honey, why don't you state your name?
Yeah, so you state your name and your address, where you live.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Ransom. I'm from Troop 399, and today you guys helped me complete the citizenship in the community. Is it on? So let me restate that in case people didn't hear. My name is Jonathan Ransom from Troop 399, and you guys helped me complete my citizenship in the community. I had one last requirement where I had to find a problem in any meeting, so I chose the school board meeting. So I used the enrollment problem as my problem. And so what I wanted to say was, thank you for helping me with that. And then I wanted to say, since I've been to two schools before this school, that I find the food much better because I was born in Vegas, so I went to kindergarten and first grade at Fong Elementary, and it was kind of like a TV dinner lunch. So it was just like heated up, and that's about it. And then Bedford, I packed half of the year and then packed, bought half the year. Here, I feel like, I, like, you guys need to cook my dinner and stuff like that. So I find the food very good. So that's all I wanted to say. It's very good food.
Thank you. That was worth staying, Mr. Bendis. Okay. See, nobody else looking to address the board? I'm going to move on to item H, our treasurer's report recommendations. This is the minutes of the regular meeting. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes of September 16th, 2015, and the special meeting of September 25th, 2015. And this was set to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I got to find it on the paper. Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 4-0. Item I, action items personnel, without objection from my colleagues, I'll read items one, two, and three together. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And finally, item I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So.
I'm going to go, Mrs. Davis got that first one. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second, then Ms. Kane Criswell. Any questions, comments? All right, roll call.
If I could just point out that on the resignations, you will find that Mrs. Newbold is retiring. After 16 years, Mrs. Newbold is currently our EMIS coordinator, and plays a large role in making sure that our reporting is accurate. A lot of what she does helps the district to receive funding. A lot of what she does helps the district to, um, receive funding, and so her accuracy is extremely important, and we're gonna miss her. She's gonna be with us till the end of her calendar year, she'll be leaving on January first of two thousand and sixteen. And the other thing, Board of Education, I just wanted to mention, we have so many supplemental contracts here on the agenda this evening. This is a mark of our staff, especially our teachers, that are really committed to working with our kids beyond the school day. Um, many, 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 many supplementals on the agenda this evening, and so I just wanted to, uh, make that public statement. Uh, they, they work really hard, and this is just, um, a demonstration of, of so many ways that they affect our students from the elementary all the way through high school.
Thank you, I would add, you know, that's very much appreciated. Those are very long days for especially those that have early, early assignments and have to be in the buildings very, very early, and, uh, the, you know, the time literally is changing, so they're gonna start when it's dark and end when it's dark, um, but we appreciate their dedication, and we send our congratulations, uh, to Ms. Newbold and, uh, with her retirement, even though she will be missed. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that also passes four-zero. Moving on to action items, new businesses, this is J. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read these together. J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from the Wilco- I'm sorry, from the Wilcox Primary School, PTA, of a one-year subscription for discovery education valued at one thousand fifty dollars used by the staff and students per the attached exhibit. J2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of five Chromebooks for RB Chamberlain valued at fourteen hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents from DonorsChoice.org of New York, New York, for the attached exhibit. J3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of a microwave from Rahav Thimamna from Glenbrook Drive in Remiderville to be used by the students in the cafeteria at RB Chamberlain Middle School, and was valued at one hundred dollars. J4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of a microwave from Bob and Jan Givat of Firethorn and Aurora to be used by the students in the cafeteria at RB Chamberlain Middle School, and is also valued at a hundred dollars. J5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of school supplies from the LWML Lutheran Women's Missionary League, Our Redeemer Lutheran Church of Solon, Ohio, to be distributed to the Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, and George G. Dodge Intermediate Media School, Samuel Bissell Elementary and Wilcox Primary School. A total of three boxes and one bag of miscellaneous supplies will be given to students as needed. J6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listed items for RB Chamberlain to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. J7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of items from Samuel Bissell Elementary to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit, items are no longer working and will be replaced. J8, event security, police officers, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following police officers and rates based on start time for security at the events for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year, and permit the superintendent to employ additional personnel as needed, and there's, uh, attached charts with names and pay rates. J9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the continuous improvement plans for the dis- for the district and for the Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School, as recommended by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, and sent to the board under separate cover. And finally, J10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with InfoSNAP Inc., uh, from Austin, Texas, for the use of an online registration management system, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, and sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for those ten items as read?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Kane Criswell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. And now to discussion, let me see. Um, I would just point out, um, in J8, that the salary terms that you, that you see there are set forth by the, uh, the city of Twinsburg, that is their standard salary schedule for police officers in those time slots. Um, I wanna thank, uh, the various donations, we appreciate that as always, and, uh, I know, uh, Mrs. Powers, I don't know if you wanna address, uh, continuous improvement in nine, and, and you've already told us a little bit about ten.
Sure. Um, item J9, uh, our continuous improvement plans, you know, Board of Education, annually the district is required to not only write a, a continuous improvement plan for the school district, but for each of our five schools too. So, starting back in the summer months, our building administrators work with their building teams, uh, to design and develop their CIP for their building, and this year, um, there are three basic goals. Um, all the buildings are similar, it's a math goal, a reading goal, and a goal that talks about positive behavior intervention supports, or PBIS, and wellness. And so, um, the work of the school teams has been vetted through a, a review, uh, process, and then on September twenty-first, each of the building leaders brought their plan, and Mrs. Farthing presented the district plan to the, um, Curriculum and Technology Committee for their review, um, and passed through that, uh, review, and now it's, uh, before the Board of Education for your approval, hopefully. And then, uh, J10, the InfoSNAP agreement is what I referenced earlier today, uh, earlier this evening, with regard to the online forms for our parents, it'll really make the beginning of the school year, and any changes throughout the school year much easier for our families.
I think there'll be a lot of, a lot less hand cramps on the, on the forms. Questions from my colleagues?
Very excited.
Very excited about the forms, you know. Mine'll hopefully just be copy and paste and change the first name with Twins, it's a lot easier. If there's no further questions or comments, roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that item passes four-zero. Continuing with J, two items, I'll read these together without objection from my colleagues. Textbook adoption, adoption, French one and two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approved the purchase of Discovery and French, Level One and Two textbooks from two thousand and thirteen copyright for the instruction French one and two at the Twinsburg High School. This proposal is for four thousand sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum and Technology Meeting held September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and sent to the board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. And J12, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopt a basic course in American Sign Language textbook from TJ Publishers, copyright nineteen ninety-four. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee meeting September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and sent to the board under separate cover, and this also is a permanent improvement expense. Is there a motion for these two as read?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Who's that, Kath? Kath? I think I'd be able to hear you right next. Um, any questions, comments? I know, uh, we did skip over, and we will return to committee reports, but this would be the opportunity for, uh, those on curriculum technology or, or administratively, if they wanna address anything on, on these two items.
Um, I just wanted to make mention under J12, the copyright there. Um, if I were sitting at home or listening to Mr. Felber read that that's a nineteen ninety-four copyright, I would think that might mistake in what you're saying, and, um, Mrs. Farthing was asked the question during the Curriculum and Technology Committee, uh, meeting as to why we're approving a textbook that has a bit of an age on it. Um, this particular textbook, actually, a lot of textbooks were looked at for American Sign Language. Um, it is a, a book, it's a reference book, where it has a picture of a, you know, caricature and the, the specific handling, uh, hand signs, uh, signing that word or those words. Hasn't changed over time, sign language is sign language is sign language, and so because of what, um, the appearance of the book and the ease of learning from that book for our students, the committee that vetted that book out, including our sign language teacher, Kelly Loyman's, um, suggests that this is the best resource that, that they could find. So that's the reason why that book is a little bit older.
That would've been my question, as a former curriculum and technology person, I was glad that, that you addressed that.
Yes, thank you.
As I read that, I was thinking the same thing. Um, anything else from curriculum and technology? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those items pass four-zero, and I did, uh, note, uh, we're at K miscellaneous, but we did not have committee reports listed in the top of the agenda, and, and I'm not sure if there's an oversight, so I am going to ask now if any of my colleagues have any reports from committees.
No.
Okay, um, Policy Committee me- uh, did meet today, uh, in public session, and there will be, uh, quite a packet coming to my board colleagues, um, recommendations from, from that meeting. And, uh, Finance Committee is meeting on October twelfth, four PM at the...
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay, move back, four-thirty, at, uh, the board office, correct?
Yes, correct.
I changed my schedule, I thought it was four PM. All right, any other committee schedule? All right, anything else for miscellaneous?
Yes.
All right, uh, the board does have need for executive session, and we do anticipate the board reconvening, uh, for board action following that. So, um, I will make the motion that the board enters into executive session at eight oh three, to consider the employment and compensation of public employee as per the Board of Education Policy Number zero-one-six-six-A, and to discuss the board's legal counsel disputes involving the board as per Board of Education Policy Zero-one-six-six-D. I've made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis, uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
And that passes four-zero, and again, uh, the board will be reconvening, uh, at a future time, and, uh, there will be board action following, um, our executive session when we reconvene out of executive session. So, thank you for coming tonight, you're more than welcome to state, not sure how long we'll be back there, but...
Yeah.
All right. This is Wednesday, October seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and the board is reconvened from executive session at nine forty-two.